You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that were nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the Sand Hills on a river called Cake Field. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one hurt around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
We'll call the May 14th, 2012 Federal City Council Meeting to Order. Thank everyone for being here tonight and we ask that you stand for our invocation led tonight by Mayor Pro Tim Arp and if you'd remain standing for a pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for another great day in the city of Fayetteville and thank you for the wonderful heritage we have here. As we prepare to celebrate a 250th anniversary, we're just, we're very thankful for all those who have led the way here in this city and we just ask that as we continue to press forward as a community that's united, that we would do so in a way that would be honorable to all our citizens and to all people of faith and all people of different backgrounds, that we would just be a great community in that we embrace people, we embrace diversity and we embrace the future you've laid out for us. For we ask that tonight that you'd bless these proceedings and give us wisdom and help us to do the best we can to our ability in serving this great city. For we ask in the name of Christ, amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We do anticipate having some additional council members that join us as the night progresses, so bear with us there. I think we have majority here already. And we'll begin with item 4.0, which is approval of tonight's agenda. Could I have a motion for that? Mr. Bates?
Move.
Mr. Chris, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Hare. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor, was that with the change in the items under section?
Okay, yes ma'am. We'll change that. Let me modify that approval if it's okay, Mr. Chris. We'd like to move, flip 8-2 and 8-3 and have the budget presentation prior to the strategic plan.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Is that okay with you, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, let me have your vote on that motion, please. Let's see, that would be approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move now to tonight's, have some recognition that we'd like to ask some of our guests to join us. I think Mr. Andrew Snyder of the North Carolina Forest Service is here to make a presentation to the city on behalf of the Tree City USA program.
It's a pleasure to be here today to present the city of Fayetteville with its 10th Tree City USA Award. Fayetteville is one of 70 cities and towns in North Carolina and one of 3,400 in the nation to receive this recognition. The Tree City USA began in 1976 as a bicentennial project, co-sponsored by the National Association of State Foresters and the United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service. The Tree City USA program is a partnership between the North Carolina Forest Service and the Arbor Day Foundation. Awards are presented annually to cities and towns that demonstrate a commitment to making their communities more livable by planting and caring for trees. Fayetteville has once again met the four criteria for this award. They have a public tree ordinance, they have a tree board for responsible for the care and management of trees with members here present at this evening, a community forest program with an annual expenditure, and an annual Arbor Day observance, which this year's was actually at the Botanical Gardens. For a community forestry program to be effective, it takes support and commitment from the entire community. In Fayetteville, the community forestry program thrives because of a combined dedication of the tree board members, city staff, elected officials, business community homeowners and all residents who take pride in improving the quality of life in Fayetteville through the environmental stewardship. So on behalf of the National Arbor Day Foundation and the North Carolina Forest Service, I am proud to present Fayetteville with its 10th Tree City USA Award.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm here tonight for behalf of the Joint Apairance Commission. My name's Johnny Lanthorne. I'm the current Chair of the Commission right now. One thing I want to bring up, I was here last year about the Community Apairance Awards Program, we're back. This is just to remind everyone that we're doing it again and we would like support from y'all, the constituents, and the program started April 1st and it's going to go through until the 15th of June. And we have these brochures for everyone to get.
That'll be great. We'll make sure that's on the city website as well, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harp, if you don't mind, turn that sign and let everybody take a look at it.
Okay, council will move now to item 5.0, the public forum. As you know, the public forum is designed to invite citizen input and discussion. The forum shall last no longer than 15 minutes and each speaker shall have up to two minutes to address the council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. If you're interested in speaking on any of the items that are designated as a public hearing, and we do have one of those tonight, we ask that you reserve your comments until that public hearing. When you see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left of the two minutes, and when you see the timer blink and change from yellow to red, that means the full two minutes has expired. When your name is called, we ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record. Madam Clerk, we'll begin the public forum.
Sir, our first speaker is Mr. Killian Farry. He's not here. Our next speaker is Mr. Dennis Thompson.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Dennis Thompson and address is 3912 Stretton Avenue, 28306. I'm here just asking for support from the city council of trying to put in some control measures for medical condition drivers. As I researched, there's no law in effect to protect some of our medical condition drivers when they have the experience an episode behind the wheel. My thing is that when there's a license carrying weapon owner that registers weapons to conceal carry, when an officer calls that registered driver license plate in, it actually pops up on his laptop and say, hey, this is a concealed weapon carrier. My thing to the council is that we can implement this to our medical condition drivers because they also have to register with DMV. So if there is a registered driver with a medical condition, if his license plate get called in, I don't see why not he have the same opportunity as a concealed weapon carrier. Hey, this is a medical condition driver, maybe something is going on, that's why this particular driver is parked and not responding to any commands that an officer may give him. So from my research, there's nothing in the state or any additional states that's implement as such. So I'm just, this is just a beginning for me, my journey trying to push this across. I do like to have the city council help me to push this to the state of North Carolina and maybe this can go on further. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Thanks. Great idea. We appreciate you coming, sir.
Our next speaker is Ms. Wendy Mitchener.
Hello. My name is Wendy Mitchener. I live at 223 Hillside. At the bottom of your stack, you will see a little package that starts off, what's the real story behind the postal crisis? And I'm bringing this to your attention because I think you all know we have about 500 jobs, good paying jobs are about to go south. And it, from what I've been able to read about it, this is a problem that is entirely a gift to the US public from our Congress. In other words, the postal system itself is a well-run business. It's doing a very good job and it's turning a profit. And apparently some people in Congress saw that and said, money! So they passed a law that said that the postal service was going to have to take those profits and even actually more than those profits and put it in a nice little escrow account which won't be touched for decades there by making it available to Congress to borrow. But in the meantime, the postal service is suffering and we're going to be suffering if we allow this to go through. Among other things, you can see that there, it's not Fayetteville by itself, there's 250 other cities. And perhaps you all have been doing something, but I haven't been reading about it in the paper, so I don't know. But with those 250 other cities, if y'all could bound, get together to protest this reduction of a very important service and economic driver in our community and in their communities, because Congress can't get its act together and take care of its own house, so it's raiding the post office. And so I'm speaking to you all, you particularly. We've got 500 jobs that we need to keep in our country, in our city. And I think there's a lot of other people you'll find that you could be helpful.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming.
So I would like to see something in the paper.
It was in the paper, ma'am. Three days ago.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Sir, our next speaker is Amia Aronimi Mohammed Smith.
I don't think he's here, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Mr. Archie Barringer.
My name is Archie Barringer. I live at 2271 Jenna Shane Drive here in Fayetteville. My zip code is 28306. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I come before you tonight representing any number of veterans' families who have loved ones interred at the Sand Hills State Veterans Cemetery. The conditions there are deplorable. Funerals are held under an open concrete shelter known as a committal structure. There are no walls or doors, nothing to prevent the wind, rain, and elements from blowing in. It's really like a wind tunnel. It's extremely cold in the winter and unbearably hot in the summer. There are metal folding chairs to sit on and an old wooden podium for the minister or speaker to stand behind. I find this to be unacceptable. We as Fayetteville are the host city to the premier military installation in the world, being Fort Bragg. I believe that our veterans deserve better than this and I believe that we can do better than this. I know that as a municipal government that we are limited in what we can do because this is a state veterans cemetery. However, I would like to suggest and request that we as a council be willing to support improving this facility by endorsing a recommendation to our local bipartisan political delegates here in Fayetteville and Cumberland County to introduce a bill to the North Carolina Legislature allowing for the Department of Veterans Affairs and State Construction Office that would provide for these much needed repairs and improvements. I'm asking tonight not for your money, but for your support. I will be on WIDU Live Talk Radio with Jeff Thompson, 1600 on your radio dial tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock to answer any questions, comments, or opinions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Barringer.
Sir, our final speaker is Mr. Clifton Cameron.
Good evening. My name's Clifton Cameron. I live at 1924 Finnegan Street, Fayetteville, 28303 in the Haymount area. And this evening I was, came to speak about the proposed street closure for Finnegan Street up in the Haymount area. My house is actually the property at the end of Finnegan Street. Yes?
We actually have a public hearing on that subject.
Oh, okay.
In just a couple of minutes.
Oh, I got you.
That would be the opportunity for you to speak on that, sir.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you so much. Did you sign up for that, sir?
I did. Okay. I didn't know what, I signed up, I guess, for both of them. Sorry about that.
We'll be right back with you, sir.
So we have no further speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public forum. We appreciate everyone being here tonight. And council will move now to item 6, which is tonight's consent agenda.
Move that we approve.
Have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you, Mr. Hare. Any discussion? May I ask for your vote, please? That is unanimous. And we'll move now to our public hearings. And let me read the directions for tonight's public hearings. First of all, each side will have a total of 15 minutes to present your position whether you are for or against. Individual speakers will have one time to speak and will be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesman is designated, in which case a spokesman may use the entire 15 minutes. When you hear the beep and see the light located on the podium change from green to yellow, that means there's approximately 30 seconds left. And when you hear the beep and see the timer located on the podium change from yellow to red, that means a full three minutes has expired. We ask that when your name is called, you come to the podium and state your name and address loudly so we can make note of it for the record. We'll begin with item 7.1, and I think Ms. Parker's here for a presentation from staff. Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council.
Good evening.
On March 5th, the city received a deposit and a petition to close a portion of Finnegan Street from the end of the pavement to the end of the platted right-of-way pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 160A-299. This portion is shown on the map that's enclosed in your packets. North Carolina General Statute requires a public hearing to be set and on April 10th, council set the public hearing for said closure for tonight. The real estate division has contacted local utility companies to determine their need to reserve the area for easements and will reserve the easements as has been requested. Staff has also published the notice of public hearing in the local newspaper, mailed certified letters to all property owners that are adjacent, and posted the property to be closed as required by the North Carolina General Statutes. Does council have any questions for staff?
Any questions at this time? Okay, ma'am, just stand by and we'll open the public hearing and could have some later.
Sir, our first speaker is Mr. David Rock.
Evening, Mayor and members of city council. Originally I had signed up, I was kind of confused as to whether to be for or against this closure of Finnegan Street. But I think there was just some misunderstanding between Mr. Cameron and my mother, who I'm speaking on her behalf, and just as a matter of record, he was, he felt that there was going to be one opponent to this closure and she would be it. She will not oppose this closure of Finnegan Street. So unless you, I have, I really don't have anything else to say other than we, she does not oppose that closure.
Can we have your name and address, sir?
Oh, you want my name or her name?
Your name, sir.
David Rock, 308 Glenville Avenue, Fayetteville, North Carolina. 28301.
Thank you for coming, sir.
Sir, our next speaker is Mr. Clifton Cameron.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, sir.
Clifton Cameron, 1924 Finnegan Street, Fayetteville, 28303. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Thanks for having me today. Wanted to start and again thank the Rocks for coming out. There was a little miscommunication there from the beginning. But back in 2007, actually I stood exactly at this podium when I was building my house on some family property over there in Haymount and I was actually had asked for a variance and the city council was nice enough to grant that. The area where I built my property was a old, kind of maligned, grown-over lot and since then, obviously, the house has been maintained and established and has really improved the neighborhood since that time. When I was landscaping my property, however, my lot is very funny. It's at an angle. You guys can probably see that and I've got some photos I'll give to you guys in just a second. There was no definitive start-stop to where my lot ended and where the city-maintained property began. So there was centipede mixed with this and, you know, Mrs. Rock actually volunteered. She just told me tonight that for years she actually mowed that piece of property because sometimes drainage and things like that would become an issue. However, I was left with the opportunity to, you know, to leave that there and potentially have issues with my lot or fix it on good faith. As a good neighbor and a citizen, I went ahead and landscaped it, added sod, shrubbery, irrigation, regularly weekly lawn maintenance. I provide irrigation for that area, all with my capital and with my financial well-being. This greatly improved the appearance of the actual neighborhood. This spring, due to security reasons with regular pedestrian traffic actually crossing through the end of Finnegan Street into Ms. Rock and my neighbor Jonathan Dent's backyards along their fence line, we were having regular pedestrian traffic. I went ahead and erected a very custom wood picket fence. Mr. Bob Bennett, who's a retired city engineer, family friend of ours, asked, I asked, what was the proper method of potentially making sure that that property itself was going to be maintained for the foreseeable future by the people of that neighborhood, namely myself, because I've already volunteered to be able to do that. So Mr. Bennett said that this would be the appropriate avenue, to go to city council and to ask for a street closure to actually make sure that nothing or anything bad could happen to that area now that it is such a great part of the actual community. So why did I propose a street closure? I want to maintain a contiguous beautiful appearance at the end of Finnegan Street for years to come and even for the future residents of Finnegan Street. I also want to clearly delineate responsibility to myself for maintaining the property, which I already am doing, as well as I want to improve and enhance the security of the neighborhood by actually finalizing a fence without disturbing Ms. Rock's access whatsoever to her beautiful backyard in itself there. So that would be the close of my comments.
Thank you, sir.
And I have some photos I was going to provide for you guys as well.
If you'll give those to the clerk, sir, she'll pass them around, that'd be wonderful.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
So we have no further speakers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. We have any additional questions from council? Okay, I think Mr. Arp's going to handle this and Mr. Hurst did.
I would move that we adopt staff's recommendation and adopt the resolution and order the closing of a portion of Finnegan Street while reserving utility rights.
I have a motion by Mr. Arp, seconded by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the motion? May I ask your vote, please? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank everyone for coming. Okay, we'll move now into item 8.1, which is Presentation Concerning Amending Chapter 6 of Animals and Fowl. We have Ms. McDonald and Mr. Moorfield, thank you for being with us tonight, sir.
Mayor, members of council, as you know, the county has been working for several months now on revisions to the animal control ordinance. Mr. Moorfield was before the council back in February with the proposed changes to the ordinance. Council looked at those changes at that time. It has subsequently gone back to the county. The county has, their policy committee looked at this and the matter is actually scheduled for consideration and approval by the Board of Commissioners on May the 21st. In anticipation of that, Mr. Moorfield is here to talk about the proposed revisions to the animal control ordinance since he made his presentation in February. Our interest, as we have previously discussed, would be once the county approves the revisions to the animal control ordinance, that the council would also rescind its existing ordinance and adopt the county's ordinance such that it would be effective and enforceable in the municipal limits of the city of Fayetteville as well. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Moorfield and I'll also stand by for any questions you may have.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Karen. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
When I was here in February, I thought we had the last draft, but we've still had a few changes. I don't think that these are substantive changes and I don't think that they would cause any concern to the city. In fact, I think they are probably more in line with at least some of the interests expressed by the elected officials, both on the county board and the city governing board. But I'll just point out, we did put in writing now a grandfathering provision for owners currently possessing more than three dogs, it says, and/or cats. We've changed, also eliminated cats from the limitation on animals in the less than half-acre lots. We've gone ahead and put in a separate Article 5. The existing pet licensing system that's in place in the county remains in place this year, but the new, and hopefully final draft of the ordinance proposal is that it will sunset at the end of this year and a new Hanover-style pet licensing system will go into effect on January the 1st, 2013, and that's been spelled out now explicitly in the ordinance. One of the most comprehensive changes, I think, is on nuisance animals. That's been the source of probably some of the biggest conflict with citizens and one of the biggest enforcement problems for animal control since I've been here anyway, and I think even before that. The current ordinance basically makes it incumbent upon citizens to be, to provide the information that I'm that animal control, which will investigate, but it's still incumbent upon citizens to actually testify and have to be involved in the process. Back on March 12th of last year, when I started this process, I met first with Dr. Lobby and his supervisors, and this is one of the things that they had to experience the most frustration with in trying to make people understand that the limitations of what animal control could do. And it was their concern at that time and hope at that time that we could go to an approach where it was clear that nuisance enforcement was by the citizens solely. There could be some assistance from animal control, but it would still be by the citizens or the complainants. Since that time, Dr. Lobby has, I guess he got some input from citizens, but he is convinced that it was a disservice to the citizens to go that route, so he is asking, this was his recommendation, it's going to a system that's in place in New Brunswick County particularly, but a few other counties, too, that basically makes nuisance enforcement entirely the responsibility the animal control officers. In the past, we have not been able to do that because what would typically happen with barking dog complaints, for instance, that maybe happened at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, by the time an animal control officer got out there at 9:00 or 10:00, in the middle of the night, 2:00 or 3:00. When that control officer got out there at 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning, the dog wasn't barking, the homeowner wasn't at home, and it just sort of languished. Dr. Lobby says he now has 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week coverage, and that he is willing to send animal control officers where they need to investigate these sorts of complaints. The biggest difference in what this proposes and what's in existence and what we had proposed before that is, it is now incumbent upon the animal control officer, him or herself, to observe the nuisance, to hear the barking, to see what's going on, and it will still have to go through either the civil enforcement or the criminal summons route, but the animal control officer, if this is handled properly, will be able to do that without the complainant's assistance. It's going to take a lot, it potentially could take a lot more manpower and hours of resources, but Dr. Lobby is convinced that they are geared up to handle that now, so I hope that will work out. A few other changes, again, that are not substantive changes, I don't think. The penalty for a dog biting while at large was removed. That had been a separate penalty, and Dr. Lobby had insisted on that earlier, but he's finally decided that it probably is better to keep the enforcement mechanisms as simple as possible and to go to site for the underlying violation of a dog being at large. And in this new draft, that could be as much as $100 civil penalty or even a criminal enforcement, so it's got a lot of bite in it. The dogs and cats limitation that we had talked about has been dropped back to now just dogs. I think some of the commissioners had some input from citizens and veterinarians in that regard, and everyone felt that that was, would at least address the, most of the issues that we have. Liability insurance for owners of dangerous dogs in the existing ordinance, that's $100,000. That's fairly expensive insurance. Dr. Lobby had proposed, and what was brought to you back in February was increasing that to $200,000. He did some checking into that after we had gotten that far with it and found it would have been almost impossible for most folks to have obtained that insurance. So we've actually dropped it now to a requirement of $50,000. That is still a substantial cost on a homeowner's premium, if you can get it, policy, but for most instances, I mean, 50,000, if it's a dog bite, $50,000 is going to cover, or a dog attack is going to cover the injury someone might sustain. If someone is very, very seriously injured or killed, $50,000, $100,000, or a million is not going to cover it. So that was sort of the thinking behind that, is to make it as reasonable as possible, but still have the ability to enforce that. Babies control, Dr. Lobby had requested that ferrets be included with dogs and cats for the required vaccinations. That's actually a revision of state law that was not in our ordinance, and I'm not aware that it's in any other ordinance that I've ever been involved with, but it is state law, and I don't think that would be a big issue. Again, as I stated, for the pet licensing, we will be going to the new Hanover-style system automatically with this new ordinance on January the 1st, 2013, and I believe that gives us plenty of time, and that process has already begun, to educate the public, educate veterinarians, and get everyone on board with making that a success, and I think we can do that. The final draft of provisions that the city of Fayetteville has specifically requested have been included in this now, so you can all see those if you had any questions about that. What I propose to do is, again, this is going to the Board of Commissioners Monday. It is my best guess now that they will adopt it Monday. I've already had input from four mayors from other municipalities besides Fayetteville, who also want to apply this ordinance directly in their jurisdictions and have somewhat of a uniform system. I don't know if the other jurisdictions don't want to do that. I just haven't heard anything from them. But what I would plan to do, and I've already had some discussion with John Jackson, when he was serving as attorney for a couple, well, three of the other towns, had drafted a resolution, their local agreement, that would be sort of uniform and have it ready and rolled out next week for anyone else who wants to get on board with this, and I think it will be a big step forward for animal control in the county, the city, and throughout. And I'd be glad to ask any questions, if you have any.
Thank you for being here, and thanks for the progress y'all continue to make. I had a couple of questions, I think some council people did as well. The part about being grandfathered in, does that mean those pets that were appropriately registered during the annual property tax listing?
Yes, sir.
Those are the ones grandfathered in, right?
Yeah. Appropriately registered and vaccinated, I mean, we really couldn't grandfather in something, an animal that's in violation. There will be given, people will be given an opportunity to come into a compliance.
And then the new Hanover County style, I really commend y'all for moving in that direction. We think that will increase enforcement and participation and generate additional fees, income. All that goes into animal control, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's how we're able to have 24/7? Wonderful. And just maybe Ms. McDonald could help me with this. You know, we spent a lot of time, maybe about four years ago, with this breeding limit, you know, we set aside in the city. Does that, how does that impact that effort that we put in place at that time concerning someone being kind of a breeder inside the city, if they had X number of dogs, or X number of litters per year? Someone?
Mayor, if you recall, that was, the city did not have a limit on dogs at that time, and so that was a way to try to limit that. That provision would go away if this is adopted. Yes.
All right, that makes perfect sense. Thank you. Ms. Chris?
Yes, sir. Counselor, Mr. Moorefield, I've had several inquiries, and this is kind of a two-part question. People are asking me, how did you arrive at the three-dog limit? And the reason they're asking that is, I've had people say to me, well, what does this do to someone who goes down to the pound and is willing to take two or three dogs home the day before they're scheduled to be euthanized? And so they end up with five or six dogs at their home, and they're trying to find pet owners to adopt those. That's the first question. How did you arrive at the three-dog limit, and what does this do to the good Samaritan that wants to go down there and keep dogs from being terminated by taking them home?
Under the, in existing county ordinance, if you had four dogs in really any residential zone, the zoning classification, the zoning requirements classified you as a kennel, and you had to comply fully with the kennel regulations, which frankly, you were probably already in violation of the county ordinance if you had four dogs. I'm not so sure that's, I mean, that's been, was enforced by the zoning inspectors, and there was some enforcement of it, but it was usually, the complaint was made to animal control, and that was sort of hard to coordinate between animal control and zoning, and that was the reason for going. And it's really not much of a change with respect from what's already existing in the county and what's proposed. As far as, again, it's only on lots of less than 20,000 square feet, which would cover most of the city, but it's, out in the county, you do have areas certainly where there are larger lots, and that's typically not been where the problem has been with complaints from neighboring property owners because of the size of the lots. If you're asking specifically if someone is like trying to foster a dog or an animal from the shelter, that's a separate program, and that's something that the animal control shelter operation already has in place. So I think, I mean, if you, obviously, if you were authorized by the animal control department to have dogs on some sort of temporary basis for a foster program, there's no plan to do away with that program. My understanding is that that was, when they first started doing that, there was a lot more interest in it than it is now, and I think it's probably because it's just as hard for people that are fostering these dogs to work through rescue groups and stuff to get some of them adopted out as it is for the shelter, but they're still trying.
And the next question is, my understanding from reading what you said was, Dr. Lobby tried to get a higher insurance rate, but companies were not in favor of doing that, so it looks like we're going to be at a limit of $50,000? The question that was asked of me is, what happens when a dangerous breed or two, and this is a realistic question, mauled somebody? And we know that those hospital bills and all may very well go beyond that insurance limit. What do we do then, beyond going to court and suing them?
It would just be a private civil matter between the person who was injured and the dog owner.
That's what I thought. Third and final question. How does this proposed ordinance put teeth in the process of stopping these folks from selling these puppies in these shopping places on Saturdays and Sundays?
It, that's always been in the ordinance, it remains, you know, selling dogs on right-of-ways and stuff like that. That's no different than it has been, Councilman Chris. Dr. Lobby says that he's got more folks out there trying to address these things, and just from my own perspective, the number of issues that my office has had to deal with has substantially declined in the last year. So there has been more enforcement. I mean, there's no doubt in mind. Is there enough enforcement? You know, there may never be enough enforcement, but I think we're, I hope that the potential revenue gains from going to the new system will pump some money in there. I believe that there are some more animal control officers slated in the budget this year. I mean, it's been a continuous problem that requires concern every year.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Herr?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Moorefield, Attorney Moorefield, I understand why you would take the citizens out of the complaint part of it, maybe just for, you know, protection and not really trying to put the citizen face-to-face with a situation like this possibly. But is there a way that, because I don't see how we curtail the dog barking or some other issue, or a loose-running dog from a neighbor's house, if a citizen doesn't call you? So what I was wondering, and we know without a citizen being involved, but what I was just wondering, was it also something to consider, or is it too late to consider as a part of the ordinances where with the forms of technology that we have now, nowadays, you know, we have the iPads that we can record, and we can get the picture, we can get the sound, we can do the same things with our phones? Is there some form that possibly that could be used so that it wouldn't necessarily, if these were your reasons of putting a citizen, face-to-face with citizens, you know, with the bad dog person, in order to protect that one, I'm assuming that's probably one of the reasons why, to use something along that line? Because it's going to be impossible for a policeman or animal control to always come to a call, and you get there, and the dog is still in place, or the dog is still barking, or something along that lines. Because a lot of times, I mean, constituents tell me that all the time, and the time you get there, the dog is quiet, he's gone, or whatever the case may be. Could we use this form of technology and use that? And that's been what has been part of the confusion, and I think the frustration with some public relations issues. A lot of folks will record, we've had folks record a lot of time of dog barking, and they want animal control to take that and go to court with it. And these serious cases, I mean, the only way you're ever going to curtail is go to court, and we can't use that in court. I mean, we still, when we take someone to court with us in civil court or criminal court, the rules of evidence still apply, and someone has got to, if you do a videotape or audiotape, someone has still got to authenticate that. And if it's not the animal control officer, the person who did observe the, you know, do the taping has to testify, and that's the issue, or has been one of the issues. Folks think that they can give us a tape or even a video, and I've seen some videos of some pretty bad dog situations, but if the person was not willing to testify under the existing ordinance, there was really, unless the animal control officer was able to observe something themselves, we were just limited in what we could do, and that's been the problem. The biggest difference in what is proposed now, what, well, one of the biggest differences in what's proposed now, is in the past, in the existing ordinance, we had folks that a lot of civil citations were written over ongoing nuisance complaints, and they just never did anything about them. And unless the animal control officer actually observed that behavior or the conduct or the nuisance themselves, that was also hard to collect from just a civil citation perspective. This does add a new dynamic to it, in that now, if the owner does not abate a nuisance after, I think it's three tries with civil penalties, the animal control officer may seize and impound the animal, and that's a new approach. That's working in some more rural counties, and I don't know that it's been tried somewhere within an urban area like Fayetteville, but that's what Dr. Lobby, he thinks that's the way to go now, and we've not done that in the past. Let me make sure I understood, understand what you just said. So if there are three calls, right, did you say three? Not calls, actually citations. Okay, so they have to be actual citations? Okay. Issue a notice of violation of civil penalty for the first offense and additional penalties if the owner fails to abate the nuisance after the second civil penalty. So upon the third go-around, animal control will now have the authority to seize the animal. That's good, that's good. I understand that. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Bates?
Nothing.
Okay, Mr. Fowler?
Yes, sir, I just have a couple of questions. I'm curious, what is the desired outcome by limiting the number of dogs? What's the purpose of it?
The issues where you have folks, a lot of complaints coming from neighborhoods or adjoining properties where someone's got 27 cats, eight dogs, I mean, when you have...
Okay, well, 27 cats is out because there's no limit on them.
Yeah, that was the reason I was in at the beginning, but even, we have people with a lot of dogs, and they create a lot of problems.
What kind of problems? Are you talking about noise problems? In other words, nuisance problems? Are we talking about here?
Not always noise, just bad sanitary conditions with not cleaning up after the animals.
The owners being...
Personal, yeah.
Okay, all right. And the second thing is, on the issue of dangerous dogs, is there a set number of breeds that are considered dangerous dogs?
There are no breeds by this ordinance that are considered dangerous, no, just the conduct of the dog.
The conduct of the dog itself. Okay, that'd be established. And then you said the limit is 20,000 square feet or less on a lot, is that correct?
For the three-dog limit.
For the three-dog limit. If they have more than 20,000 square feet, there's no limit on the number of dogs.
That's correct.
Okay, so if they had 20,050 feet?
That's, if, well...
There'd be no limit on the number of dogs.
If you're in a zoning classification for R20 or less, that's where it applies. If you had a bigger lot in an R20 zoning classification, you would still be limited. It's looking at the neighborhood instead of the specific lot.
Okay, that was important for me to know. And then the other thing is, how do new arrivals in the city find out about this? Now, if somebody, how does somebody who moves into the city, they're coming in and they've got four dogs, and they're coming from Tacoma, Washington, or Fort Wachuka, or somewhere else, and they've had four dogs and they move into the city, how are they made aware of this?
The same way that they would find out about any other, you know, requirements would apply to living in North Carolina or in Fayetteville. I mean, there is no way to contact new arrivals and provide the animal control. This will go on the county's website when it's done, it's on the city's website, so the same information that's always available to anyone moving to a new area, in the same way, will be available.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Applewhite?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a just quick question to follow up on what Councilmember Chris asked. With the $50,000 liability, anything that exceeds that, you said, would be a civil matter between the owner of the dog and the person that was bit. Is the state of North Carolina a first-bite state where literally the first bite is, I hate to say, free, but...
That's a common law, yeah, that is a common law provision. Yes, it is.
So if that, if it's that dog's first bite, there really is no civil litigation in this state?
No, there still could be. What happens in the process we have in place? If you, there's no requirement to have insurance to cover a dangerous dog until it's been declared either potentially dangerous or is a dangerous dog because of its conduct. So as you said, the first time that something happens, you know, the owner probably would not have insurance, and there's no way, unless you say that every dog owner has to have a liability insurance policy, there would be no way to address that, but that's just the nature of the state law right now.
Do you know of any... Do you know of any, you may not know, but any movement in the state legislature to address that issue about across the state being that dogs get one free bite off of citizens before they-
I'm not aware of any, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from council?
Yes, sir, one more, sir.
Okay, Ms. Chris.
Mr. Moorefield, a situation where the neighbor has a pet, and the neighbor's child, six years old, five years old, goes out to walk the pet on the leash in their front yard, and the neighbor's dog comes over and maules the dog to the extent that he kills it. What's the course of action for the owner of the deceased dog? How is that handled? I mean, this first bite thing applied to humans, I guess.
Someone's dog is killed on their own property by a dog that comes on the property?
Right, that becomes a civil suit?
Well, it's a violation of the existing ordinance. Right now, that dog would be seized. The owner would have to come into compliance, and other than you, also, the owners would have to come into compliance with the dangerous dog regulations before they got the dog back. I mean, we already do that, we already address that. The dog has to be restrained on the property at all times. If it goes off the property, it has to be muzzled on our leash of a competent person. I mean, there's a lot of stuff already in the existing ordinance that's carried forward, and this ordinance addressed that.
Is there statute of limitation on the time in which the owner had to report that to animal control? Because this is the actual situation.
I understand, yeah. And we've had some strange situations where people didn't report something like that for four or five months later. And I'm telling you, typically when that happens, it's because of something else. The neighbors have fallen out over another issue. That's what causes that to happen.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Moorefield, thank you for being here. I think we were going to watch what happens with the county on the 21st, and then we'll, assuming there are any additional questions from council, we'll bring the item back for further discussion and potential adoption.
Thank you all.
Thank you for being here, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, council, per our previous action, we'll now move to item 8.3, which is presentation of the recommended city and PWC fiscal year 2013 budgets.
Good evening, council. Just wanted to remind the public that's watching, this is not the first time council's heard about the budget. We talked about the budget last week, and of course, you have a number of meetings that we'll review here where you get more detailed conversation about the budget. But this is just basically our public kickoff to let everybody know how we're moving forward with this process, and when they'll have an opportunity to comment. So I'll go over in brief, and of course, with me tonight is Mr. Blanchard. There he is, who will step up and give a short overview of the PWC budget as well. So again, we're just going to go over a quick overview, talk about major initiatives, some budget summary, and then we'll talk about the general fund a little bit, the PWC, and then we'll ask the council to set a public hearing for later this month where you'll get the opportunity for the public to actually comment on your budget, should they like to. Major initiatives or investments we've recommended during the proposed budget is, of course, implementation of our ramp program to look at rental properties. And we've included police positions there, a new police officer to work on enforcement, a couple of crime analysts, and also some positions in development services to support the research necessary to enforce that ordinance. We've also included a new manager in our police department as well to deal with data, which is a recommendation of our noble report response to concerns from the community about how we can provide that information and collect and analyze that information on police stops. And we've also worked on compensation. One of the major objectives of the council is take a look at employee compensation and see how we are in the marketplace and what we need to do to attract and retain quality employees. So we have investments recommended for that item as well. This is the overview of all the expenditures of all funds, $187 million. And I just wanted to direct the public to our website, our Budget Chronicles website, where they'll be able to see the detail of the budget, the budget message itself, and also the detailed expenditure and resource items that are available under each one of these funds. A short summary, looking specifically at the general fund, look at property taxes there, we can see we've had some growth in property taxes. And one of the things we'll be talking about during our next workshop is how that trend is looking, based on recent history and forecasted into the future. Intergovernmental, that's our sales tax. You can see that our sales tax has also been something that is growing for us, something that's recovering from a period of stagnation for a number of years, and we're starting to see that start to grow a bit in our community. On the expenditure side, personnel, of course, is our largest expenditure. We are a service business, and our police officers and our firefighters and our parks and rec staff are really where we invest our money to provide service on a day-to-day basis. That change there is the few positions that we've talked about, but really is looking at trying to maintain competitive compensation. We do have some contract services and some other operating expenses. The major change there, again, is in our personnel. The fund balance, and that's really our savings account, and this really looks at an analysis of change. So we start talking about, of course, is that where we start off with the larger fund balance, that's designated and undesigned, things that we've actually defined what we want to do with and those that we have not. And it looks at change. You can see that we've actually projected in the FY12 budget that we will expand, actually projected use in the general fund budget for FY13 is $2.6 million. So if this falls all with the way we've planned it, we'll have $17 million at the end of next fiscal year, which is still in excess of the minor or the minimum standard that's been established by council. One of the things that we've done, and we've talked about in some detail, is that we've looked for opportunities to use some of our savings to reduce the impact on the operational dollars, so that we can make some of those investments we've talked about for ongoing expenses, while using some of our savings to actually fund one-time expenditures, major expenditures, like in this case, a fire engine was one of those things we purchased this year using fund balance. One of the major issues that in this budget that's been a bit of a challenge has been concern over uncertainty in some of our revenues. We did have the Gates Four annexation, which, due to a court action, became effective just as we were trying to finalize the budget. As part of that, we had some additional revenues which became available to the community. However, there's a significant amount of uncertainty about whether those revenues will be recurring or whether they will, you know, no longer be available. So in this case, what we've done in the proposed budget is we've used those funds, we've treated them like one-time dollars. If we had more certainty about those funds and knew that they were going to be recurring revenues, then we'd be able to responsibly allocate those to ongoing operational expenses, like investments in park and recreations or public safety. And as the slide says, the money could be used to respond to some of the council's concerns about adding police officers to the force. That's an issue that we have talked to our local delegation about, and we expect that in this short session, there'll be some action fairly quickly that may resolve this one way or another. I'm going to turn it over to Steve for a quick summary of the PWC budget, and then we'll answer your questions and talk about setting that public hearing.
Good evening. Very quickly, I just have a couple of slides here. As you can see, the PWC's recommended budget coming to council is $343,176,625. You can see the breakup for the electric fund versus the water and wastewater fund. And then for the public, the fleet maintenance internal service fund, which is $7.7 million, is basically what it takes to maintain the fleet for the city and for PWC. And that budget basically gets zeroed out at the end of the year, is paid for by the other funds. No major changes except one in our budget. We're continuing our rehabilitation programs and those types of stuff, as well as planning for growth in the community. The biggest impact on our budget this year is our new power supply contract with Progress Energy. This year, we had budgeted $110 million. Next year, we're budgeting $165 million, $55 million in increase in that power supply cost. And we've got some other monies in the budget to help mitigate those expenses. And I can find the button. Oops, wrong exit. We do have money to, still allocated for the city. As you can see from the slide here, $10.9 million basically comes from the electric side of the house going into the city, as well as some other things that we have in our budget, like support for the storm drainage issues that are out there, where we have underground services and underground utilities in conflict. And $975,000 included here for street lighting upgrades. We're looking at beginning a process of changing over our streetlights from the standard mercury and sodium vapor lights to LED type lighting like we're using downtown. And then we've got about $1,008 budget for underground conversion and the gateway improvements for the city. So we're working on that also. I guess, I don't know, we still have the other slide there. But the main thing for our customers is that we don't have any anticipated increases in rate revenues in the budget this year. There will be some slight adjustments on the electric side, just to put the rates in the right order under our new contract with Progress. But there's no increase in revenues for them. Or right now, there's no rate revenues included for water and sewer either at this point in time in the schedules. So with that, I guess, Kristoff?
Then just wanted to, want to remind the council that we have budget workshop sessions scheduled for this Wednesday, the 16th, next Wednesday, the 23rd, and then if needed, for that Friday, the 30th. And then our suggested action tonight is to actually set the public hearing for May 29. And then budget adoption is anticipated for June 11. If you have any questions, we're available for questions.
Okay, we have a few. Mr. Hare?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Blanchard?
Yes, sir.
If the city, our side of the city, not your side of the city, if our side of the city needed some additional funding, would like to get some additional funding, needed some additional support to make life better for the citizens of Fayetteville, could we come to your side of the city to get that funding? Could we talk about that?
Well, I think we are talking about some additional ways to help the city, but I don't know that we're prepared to get into detail on that.
No, I'm not asking for details tonight. I'm just asking, so you're saying that the answer to that question is yes?
Yes, we're always available to help.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'm not going to put you on the spot. The fleet maintenance part, the $7 million, I think that's what it is. I think that is a collaborative effort on our side and your side of the city as far as maintenance, upkeeping, things along that line. Am I right or wrong? Is that the part where we collaborate or we come together?
Basically, the facility is located in our shop, and we-
On your side of the city?
On our side, if you want to call it that. And basically, we maintain the fleet for the city and PWC. And whatever that cost is, gets allocated based on the amount of equipment that comes actually through the shop itself. So it's almost like a per-hour charge, depending on which kind of equipment you have coming in and out of the shop.
So my question concerning just that, on our side of the city, to you on your side of the city, what type of savings has taken place during this period of time that we've been doing that, where that responsibility, the maintenance and whatever else is done? I think maybe even probably purchasing parts or whatever through, our purchasing through your side of the city of PWC. What type of savings? Has there been any savings for the city? I mean, how do you charge this side of the city?
Well, I think, I'm not sure if you can classify it as savings, and we don't have numbers that says this is what it would have cost if you had done a different way. I think in the process we went through when we identified how this would take place, we were able to show that there would be overall less cost to the city side, as well as an improved amount of service coming in by pooling it all together into one location. I think that's where the biggest pieces come. We have had a study done and looked at outsourcing fleet maintenance for both us and the city, to see how our shop compared. And as it turned out, the numbers said that we need to continue to do it ourselves inside. We can do a better job and less expensive than we could do it outside.
Then if you would, during this budget period before it gets over, could you make those figures known, if no one else on the council, at least to myself, on what type of savings or whatever the cost was before we started doing it, and what the cost is now that we're doing it? So I can kind of get a little-
Well, I don't know that we can provide those kind of numbers. I can get you a copy of the report that was done. But, you know, when we first took over, the city really had a need to replace a lot of its equipment. They were, there was a lot of maintenance issues and those kind of things. As the city is taking on the burden of replacing more and more of your equipment, police cars and those types of things, your maintenance costs have come down, even though your capital cost has probably gone up. So it's really hard to picture and grab what would have been and could have been, and numbers, you know, two or three years ago versus now will be entirely different, because you've got a lot more newer vehicles than you had back then, those kinds of things.
So it has been some savings, has been some pluses?
Yes, I would say there's been a lot of pluses there.
I appreciate what you all on your side of the city have been doing for us. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chris?
Mr. Blanchard, put the slide back up, please, that showed support to the city. I want to make sure I'm straight on this. You are proposing to transfer a $10.96 from the electric fund to the city's general fund, right, or reserve?
Yes, sir. That money would go to, but there's monies in there that's been dedicated for particular uses.
And in addition to that, $945,000 to the storm drain program, right?
That's money that is in our budget for us to modify utilities and those kind of things to support-
Now, the question of that $945,000, is a portion of that money that were not used in this fiscal year? Or is that new money?
That's, it's, yeah, it's not new money. I mean, it's money that we anticipate collecting during the year, yes.
Okay. And then you intend to give $975,000, use $975,000 to improve street lighting?
Yes, sir.
And then 1.8 for gateway improvements?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you in advance. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bauer, I have a question. Is it time to ask Mr. Bauer, or are we still?
No, no, yeah, this is the time to ask any questions.
Mr. Bauer, you showed $834,000 from the county rec fund. How is that possible? How's that coming about? There it is. Added, okay, capital funding in county recreation, you're showing an infusion of $834,000. Where's that coming from?
That's, I believe that's accounting, I'm going to ask Lisa to back me up here, but that's accounting of money that has to come in, and then it'd be designated, and we have to then go out. So it's a flow of funds coming into our fund balance, which you have to designate and hold for the county, because it has to be used for district operations. And then it can go out. Did I get that right, Lisa?
It's in essence, their revenues exceeding expenditures.
Okay. So it's their revenues exceeding expenditures for that year. So we hold that money. It has to be, it's basically one of those designations that has to be held for the county for use in the district in the future years.
Okay. Then you showed $580,000 tied to Gates Four. Let me get, make sure I got this. You made the statement that, and I'm not sure I understood, if we don't spend $580,000 on Gates Four, we can use it for five to seven more police officers, or if we get $580,000 from Gates Four, we can use it for five to seven police officers? Straighten me out of here.
Yes. This is actually net positive revenue. So we have some new expenditures associated with serving that area. This is revenue in excess of the expenditures. So we have actually, in this budget, the number was $736,000. That $736,000 that we talked about last week included some one-time dollars, because the date of this annexation, there were two months that are included in revenues this year. That won't recur next year. So if you just look at what money will recur, and what we anticipate to be in excess of what's needed to provide service, that's $580,000. So this year, that $580,000, as currently in the proposed budget, we've used that for, as I said, one-time capital expenditures or small project funds.
Okay.
We haven't used it for ongoing operational costs because of the uncertainty about whether we actually get it, one, and two, whether we'll get it in the future years. So it really is about whether this area stays part of our community or not. If it stays part of our community, then I would recommend looking at that $580,000 and seeing if maybe we want to actually allocate it to an ongoing operational use.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chris. Mr. Hart?
Mr. Blanchard, thank you for the budget. Quick question for you. You guys, are you all in the grass-cutting business?
Are we in the grass-cutting business?
Yes, sir.
We outsource our grass-cutting, basically.
You completely outsource all your lawn- You completely outsource all your lawn maintenance and all that stuff? Why did you elect to go that way?
Well, we evaluate the processes we have, and lawn care is one of those that we decided that we couldn't do as inexpensively as we could get it contracted to do because of, you know, the types of salaries and benefits and stuff that's offered by the utility. It's really hard to compete with the private enterprise in those sections. So we don't do lawn care. We don't do internal cleaning and stuff like that. We outsource tree trimming now since we used to do all that internally because, again, our costs, we could not compete. So we evaluate our cost and outsource those things that we can't be cost-effective about.
And that's made you more efficient as a business model?
Yes.
Okay. And looking at your budget, I also noticed that this year, that PWC is, you're looking at, as a part of your budget, some increases in pay. And I'm trying to turn to this, and I'm just a little surprised because given the current economic situation, I just read in the paper yesterday, teachers haven't had a pay raise in four years. But I'm looking here, and the budget includes a 2.7% cost of living adjustment and a 1.3% merit pay raise. And as I read this, the cost of living adjustment would apply to all pay ranges. So I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. All PWC employees would receive a 2.7% pay raise?
No.
Okay. In line with...
What you're quoting there is, is numbers that actually goes into our performance formula. We do not give cost of living raises to our employees. What we do is we adjust the pay ranges, and that's what will be adjusted, is the range themselves. The employees in those ranges do not automatically get an adjustment at that time. What we do is performance evaluation is based on their performance. In that formula, there's 2.7% in there as one part of that formula, and then we have 1.3%, which is a merit piece added into that part of the formula. So basically, the 4% number that's in our performance formula and based on your performance is what you will get.
Historically, I mean, this is a projection for going forward, but historically, what's the percentage of employees that have received a performance pay increase? You may not have that number.
I don't have that number. A greater majority, a good majority of them would have because if they begin, are poor performers over a period of time, we don't normally keep them as employees.
So based on this, though, some employees could receive a 4% pay increase?
Typically, on average, and looking back, this is looking back in history, if we had a 4% number in there, we'll average somewhere around 3.5% across the company. Some will get a little higher, some will get a little lower, some get, well, we'll have one or two to get none, but very seldom we have any performers like that to last very long.
Mr. Bates?
Mr. Blanchard, could you go back one slide? Or Mr. Bauer, go back one slide? Okay, one more. Okay, where'd it go? Another one? Anyway, when you said that PWC is going to give, there it goes, PWC was going to give the city of Fayetteville $10.9 million, when it's all said and done, we've got to give, what, $2.5, $3 million of that back for part of the Phase Five? Or we don't, even though you're giving it to us, all that $10.9 does not stay with us. Is that correct? I mean, how does, some of that's got to go back.
Well, all this money comes from the electric fund. We pay payments in lieu of taxes, if that's the right term you want to use, the way to look at it, is we're going to take out of our electric fund $10.9 million and allocate it to the city. Basically, the city has determined, has taken on the burden, if you want to call it that, with Phase Five, to pay for the utility installations, and we have an agreement with that fact and how that's going to be funded. So the city is using a part of this to pay their share of the Phase Five utility installation. So, yes, if that's...
Which is, do you know how much that is, like $2.5 or $2.7 million?
I think we're looking at if we can adjust that number, but right now, it's somewhere close to $3 million, I think. But we're hoping to reduce that number down.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? We catch anybody? Just a reminder, it's not too late if you have questions and can submit those, and then they'll be posted with answers, and we'll go over those on Wednesday night, and they'll be posted for citizens to read. I encourage everybody to do that. And I think we would like a motion tonight to go ahead and set a public hearing on the budget for two weeks from tonight, which would be May the 29th.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, and then second one, Mr. Bates, if that's okay? Any, Ms. McDonough?
Just to clarify, Mayor, that our meeting will actually be on that Tuesday because two weeks from today is Memorial Day.
The 30th, okay, good. Tuesday, the 30th. Is that okay, Mr. Bates?
It's 29th.
It is the 29th on this Tuesday, not Monday?
Yes.
Okay, 29th. You still okay with that, Mr. Fowler? Okay, any discussion on that motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you for being here. Okay, council will move now to item 8.2. Ms. Rogers Carter is here tonight to update us on the city's strategic plan.
Yeah, he's here. We got a small part of that for Phase Five, sure. Yeah, but almost three making this. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Item 8.2 on your agenda is the presentation and adoption of the fiscal year 2013 strategic plan. I'd like to briefly take us through the strategic planning model that you've developed and highlight for you and the audience at home the focus of our work for the next fiscal year. Council, you have before you the strategic plan and document, looks like this, and also a handout that I brought this evening that highlights and illustrates your policy and management agenda for the last eight years. And I brought that because I wanted to highlight for you the amount of progress that really has been made toward reaching the objectives outlined in the strategic plan. The body of work itself really speaks for itself. And as we reflect on all of these initiatives, including the ones for this year, 2013, these targets for action, it's important to keep in mind that success really does begin and end in your strategic planning process. This body of work represents yours and staff's commitment to a strategy-focused organization. Thinking strategically focuses us first to ask ourselves, is my organization doing what it must do? And then we're asking, are we doing it the right way? Council met in February and again in April to reflect on those questions and to refine the items that comprise the city's strategic plan. The overall strategic plan includes a 15-year vision statement, a mission statement, core values, five-year goals, and one-year action plan with targets for action that will guide policy and management agendas. Strategic planning requires choices to be made about our community. The vision for our community and our mission as an organization remain constant, providing stability and reconfirming the validity of your plan. The vision reflects the standard of living and vibrancy that we hope to achieve through our actions today. The mission statement really identifies our role in pursuing that community's vision, and it focuses our efforts on providing quality municipal services that make Fayetteville a better place for all. And council, you've recommitted yourselves and our organization to the core values, which describe how we operate, and city council and city employees serve the community with respect. The city's goals outline the path our organization must follow in order to reach the community vision. Creating a greater tax base diversity remains the number-one goal this fiscal year. The core objective of this goal is to increase our tax base by retaining and growing jobs and by attracting development. Greater accountability for performance will be achieved with transparency as we focus our organization on the efficiencies and results. And as we increase trust and confidence in our city government, we'll look for more ways of engaging with our citizens and strengthening our efforts to develop collaborative relationships. The growing city with livable neighborhoods goal focuses on improving the quality of life for all of our citizens. And the goal of becoming a more attractive city focuses on more green spaces for the community to enjoy and the expansion of our recycling efforts. And lastly, revitalizing downtown will provide a center of economic and recreation activity that citizens will enjoy. Council spent a significant time this year prioritizing the targets for action for the upcoming year. There are 23 top and high priority items that are the activities that council and staff will spend a majority of their time on during the fiscal year. If approved by city council, this strategy will govern the policy and management agendas for the city. Now, through our policy agenda, we'll focus on managing our city's growth, on investing in our employees and providing public transit, and we'll also work to develop elements of a potential bond referendum that will sustain previous park improvements, fund tomorrow's park facilities, and ensure enhanced quality of life for current citizens and our future generations. Moving forward into the next year, our organization is committed to a path of innovation, responsibility, and efficiency. You'll see these through your policy agenda. The city will look for ways to strengthen, preserve, and grow our local resources. We're also taking significant steps to ensure that the services that we provide are efficient, and we will consider options for consolidation of services with PWC. We'll help to ensure our community is sustainable through the development of the commercial recycling program. The management agenda impacts a wide range of municipal services, from economic development efforts to crime reduction strategies. The city will look for ways to strengthen the local economy through engaging in economic development activities with our partners and with a focus on the Merkison Road Corridor. We'll continue to strengthen the community wellness plan in an effort to reduce crime, and we're going to work on implementing the new ramp program to better manage any negative impacts of rental properties in our community. As we increase the trust and confidence in our city government during the next fiscal year, we will look for more ways of communicating with our citizens and strengthening those efforts to develop collaborative relationships. The city will evaluate its inventory of buildings and facilities and will recommend improvements, and will also review problematic corridors for the speed limit modification options. Strategic planning allows for leadership with vision. It brings into focus what's important and aligns the resources for success. And as a part of this process and to ensure the advancement of the plan, council will receive their quarterly updates. After adoption, we'll be working with your staff liaisons on these targets for actions to finalize the action plan. And again, you'll see these action plans come back to you in your quarterly reports. And council, that concludes the review of your strategic planning model that you had developed for 2013. Item 8.2 on your agenda this evening is the adoption of the city's strategic plan as presented tonight and included in the materials that you have before you. If these materials reflect council's interest, I would ask your consideration for adoption. And finally, I'd like the audience to know that following the adoption tonight, the strategic plan will be placed on the website listed on your screen.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for a good job. Got a couple of questions. Mr. Arp?
Ms. Carter, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers Carter. I just noticed we changed our color scheme, and it's very attractive. What was the impetus behind changing our color scheme?
We, last year, we focused on the All-America City Award, and we had a branding approach there for that. It was Live, Thrive, Prosper, and we brought in the blue. And this year, we are focusing on our 250th celebration. And as a part of that, our staff and park and rec staff have collaborated together at an approach, a branding approach for that 250th. So you'll see that scattered throughout this year's documents, like the strategic plan, the annual report. You'll see that again in the annual report. You'll see it in the budget document and different materials throughout the city. So that's what's the impetus for this.
Okay. And then I was going to make the motion. I'll wait for the next question.
I think we're okay.
Okay. Well, then, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members, I would move that we accept the strategic plan 2013 through 2027 as presented by Ms. Rebecca Rogers Carter.
Accept or adopt?
Adopt, excuse me. Second.
I got, Mr. Hare got you there, Mr. Bates. Any, everybody so generous tonight. Any comments on the motion? Let me ask for your vote, please. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for your work, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, council, I think that concludes our business tonight. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
I'll take that one.